Good to go? All righty, thank you. This is the February 22 meeting of the Basalt Town Council. We have some business that will require a meeting and executive session, so our first order of business will be to go into executive session for a brief meeting. We will then come out, and then we are going to have a work session from 5:00 to 6:00 to discuss housing opportunities in accordance with our Basalt Forward 2030 capital funding project. So with that, I would entertain a motion from council to go into executive session.
Mayor, I move the town council into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that are or may become subject to negotiations in accordance with CRS 24-6-4024E, more specifically Basalt Vista, and to discuss the purchase or acquisition, lease transfer, or sale of real property interest in accordance with CRS 2464024A, more specifically to discuss Basalt Forward program, affordable housing project, potential properties.
Second. All righty, been moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call?
We don't.
Okay. Voice vote, then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are officially in executive session. February 22, 2022. So if you mark your calendar, it's 2/22/2022.
Happy Tuesday.
Pretty interesting. Recently happened like never.
Never.
Probably back in 1922. So with that, we will call our meeting to order. And Pam, if you'd be so kind as to call the room.
Absolutely. Let's begin with Bill Infante. Oh, Bill stepped out for just a moment.
He's here, but he's not with the room.
Ryan Slack.
Here.
Bill Kane.
Here.
Gary Tenenbaum.
Here.
Bill Infante, still here, but not here. Glenn Drummond.
Here.
David Knight.
That is a change for us in this past eight months, is that for the first time in Hope Center history, Michelle Muthing doesn't own the administrative wing of the Hope Center and the 10 offices that contribute to an admin office. And that was hard for me because I'm a licensed clinician. And so as an executive director, I always joke, I'm a crisis clinician and I try every day to be the best ED I possibly can because I really don't know what I'm doing. But I've always put all the money to the front lines. I've never put money to an admin office. I've always said nonprofits fail because too many people in an agency wear too many hats. And I vowed that I would be the only one to wear other hats other than the job people were assigned. So for the first time, we hired a program director last year, which was serendipitous because we could never do what we're doing with our school program without that person having joined us. I hired a second bookkeeper so that I now have a finance director with a bookkeeper because our budget is $2.3 million this year. I have no idea how we got here. And then I just hired an operations director who started literally 28 days ago. And so for the first time, the behind the scenes, behind the stage is supporting the front of the stage in front of the curtain. And it is going to be a game changer for our agency. It is going to allow us to do more. It is going to free me up to be that visionary, to be able to take some of the things that I think we have to contribute to the rest of the state and show them the success that we've had. It's a long-winded answer to your question.
That's a good point.
But that behind the scenes has been neglected for a long time by me on purpose because I want to put the money to the front. And so I think now it's going to allow us to really do a lot more because I will be freed up to do some of that.
Michelle, is there a chance that this sort of increase in calls or evaluations that you experienced this year, is there a chance that that was precipitated by COVID? You know, and is there a possibility that that may recede and we may get back to a little lower sort of baseline? Or is this sort of look like permanent condition going forward?
I think that's a good question. It is hard to answer, but I think you're going to battle two things at once. Number one, you're going to see the drop off of a lot of the COVID issues we've kind of seen, and some of that may taper off. I truly believe the lingering mental health effects of this pandemic will be seen for years to come. I have no doubt about that. But I also think the more people, the more we are in people's faces, the more we publicize where we are, who we are. In 2017, we did more educational classes than we had any year prior, and we got more phone calls. We had hoped the more we educated people, the more our calls would go down because people would feel better. But it only increased awareness, therefore it increased the calls. So I think as the COVID kind of pandemic issues start to decrease in crisis, we are in more schools and we are doing more in the community. Therefore, we are known more and calls will continue to come in. I like to think I could put our crisis center out of business by doing more education. But just like you will always have a need for fire, EMS, and law enforcement, I think you'll always have people in crisis. We just hope that those high-level crises start to taper off a little bit.
Is all the work that you do reactive or is there any that is proactive?
Say that one more time. All the work is reactive?
Reactive or is there also proactive?
The proactive is enormous. Again, you'll see on one of the pages in here, page five, we hired a education and outreach coordinator this year. And one of the biggest things that we know is that education reduces stigma and it raises awareness. And so the more we can educate, the better. We are really targeting our schools right now, and we are trying to do as much education within the schools as possible. The other vision I have is some longitudinal research with our kids. If we start, and because we have a foothold in each, almost every single one of the RE1 schools, could we do a longitudinal study? Could we say if we start something in first grade, can we watch these kids through sixth grade and does it make a difference? We actually have that opportunity right now because we have someone in each of our schools. So the proactive piece is our school-based program, which you'll hear Anna talk more about, but also our education and outreach. We do trainings with law enforcement, fire, EMS, and we try to get into businesses to try to get upstream. And the more we can get upstream, the more I think we're more proactive than reactive. Thank you.
Michelle, thanks for coming.
Thank you very, very much. I deeply appreciate it. I will keep information coming, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move to item 6B. This is the RE1 School District presentation and report on tobacco tax use.
Anna Cole does here.
Hi. It's great to see you all in person. So I'm the, my roles shifted, I think, since I saw you last. I'm now the Chief of Student and Family Services for the school district. I think in response to the world around us, we realized we needed kind of more a department that was really looking at a lot of the non-academic supports that are happening in schools, including mental health, integrated health services, that kind of work. So what you have seen in this update, aside from the wrong numbers based on the three-year contract we're working on with you guys, is some of the outcomes of the investment you made into putting a mental health provider from the Hope Center at Basalt Elementary School. So as you may remember, the Eagle County funds a Hope Center mental health provider at Basalt High School and Basalt Middle School. And so the town of Basalt was able to make an investment with tobacco funding to help cover the gap for the elementary school. And so some of the numbers that you'll see in there are kind of the types of services. It's been a really interesting project, as Michelle's talked a little bit about. You know, when we think about mental health in the schools and we think of a 16-year-old, it makes sense that they can walk down a hallway and sit down and talk to somebody. But it looks a little different for a six-year-old in school. And so it's been a really unique partnership with the Hope Center to try to figure out, what does that really look like for the little guys? And it certainly speaks to some of the questions you guys had about preventative work. And so we've seen a lot of still kind of one-on-one check-ins with that elementary school provider, but also a lot of more kind of co-teaching, pushing into the classroom, talking about social emotional skills, and trying to get a little ahead of, you know, talking about emotions and putting words around how we're feeling. So it certainly feels in the schools, kids are elevated, kids are escalated. I think they are, anybody who's been a parent knows that when parents are stressed, the kids start acting out. They feel it, they don't know how to articulate it. That's definitely been our reality since coming back in person last spring. I think the increased access for kids and families with the school-based mental health providers has really done a lot as a community to reduce stigma. I think one of the things we always wondered and we know we struggle with as a community is having bilingual, bicultural access to mental health. We're working on all sorts of things to do that, but I think one of the reassuring things we saw about the Hope Center data from 2021, and I hope you saw that pie chart in there, that the, when we look at who, which kids are accessing mental health services through our Hope Center providers, it really reflects the demographics of our schools. So we're seeing that even if there are language barriers, we're finding workarounds. And I think it's also one of the great things about, you know, when we have language barriers, at least in schools, we have more resources and tools with lots of bilingual staff, lots of support services to help kids get access to those services in ways that sometimes if they're outside of school with a private provider, we don't always see that same level of support. So we've been really excited about this program and certainly the increased access for kids and families. And I can tell you that I've had school leaders from across the district say, because of these sorts of partnerships, we don't feel alone in supporting our kids and families. You know, educators don't really get any sort of training in mental health services. And so a lot of times our teachers, our school leaders get really nervous and feel very unsettled when they see kids in crisis. But having a Hope Center provider in the building, having that support team for those providers that Michelle talked about, her staff, to even support the mental health providers, has been just an incredible asset to the schools in terms of, you know, I think in a rural community, one of the things that we've really seen is that unlike, I think, larger cities where, you know, there's a lot of different opportunities for different services and human services, what we've found is that in our rural communities, we really need to bring all of those to the schools because that's where our kids and families are. You know, we grapple with transportation, we grapple with trying to get people where they need to go. But the more that we can bring those services into schools, the more we can kind of connect. And so I think we're pilot, you know, we've been piloting with the Hope Center over the last couple of years, this model for kind of a local solution to mental health access. And I think it's been something that I think across the board, our schools, you know, what began as a pilot project, now certainly the schools in Roaring Fork, schools that don't have a mental health provider, that we haven't been able to secure funding and get somebody in there, I hear from them a lot that they're feeling that gap of that service. Are there questions that you guys have for me or about the program?
Well, to me, it seems like it's working. And I, you know, I kind of look at, hopefully, I won't be on the council for much longer, but I hope that we don't have to fight for this funding every year. Our tobacco tax is healthy. I hope we can make a longer-term commitment or even more of a commitment because I think if you can get to the kids in the school, it'll be a huge benefit to the future and getting it early, you know, could be a really important thing. So that's my hope for the town is to really secure that funding for the future. And we have it, so we should use it. So that's mine. It's not really a question, it's just a request to these guys.
Thank you. Thanks.
Great. Well, it's great that we forged this relationship here. Thanks very much for your fine efforts.
Thanks.
Good deal. Thanks, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christie, do you know where the tobacco tax currently stands? That fund?
Yes, I have some estimates. So it's right around $1 million.
Please use it.
Can we commit more to the school for that? Or is that, is it like a budget thing every?
No, we can, we can commit more for that particular issue.
It's funded.
They can't, it's funded.
Yeah.
So I think we're already talking, what more can we do to support these programs or ones like it? You know, we have our grant cycle coming up again, and a lot of those nonprofits that received funding last year, I'm sure could benefit from an offer of greater funding, expanding programs and things like that that support kids in and out of school. So I think there's more to be done, and we're fortunate to have that money.
Is that balance increasing like year over year, you know, if you look back?
I think, I think one of the sad parts of this is that we're seeing an increase in the people that are using tobacco instead of, you know, it's just crazy. So then as we estimate, we seem to be one year behind the current estimate for what the next year is going to bring. So that's kind of been the situation. It's, that's why it's been increasing year over year.
Do we know the, what role vaping is playing in that total?
We don't get the breakdown. Probably high.
Yeah. So next order of business, our council actions, item 7A, public hearing and second reading ordinance number four, series of 2022. An ordinance authorizing the financing of the acquisition of certain real property to be used by the police department in connection therewith, authorizing subsequent leasing of certain town property and the execution and delivery by the town of a site lease, a lease purchase agreement, and other documents related to the financing. So this is second reading, public hearing. We will be taking public comment virtually. So Christie and Ryan.
Sure, I could kick it off and Christie can follow up. But yeah, this was really the financing mechanism for us to acquire the umbrella roofing property, and that would be the future site of our police department. As you recall, that is an adjacent parcel to the Public Works piece that we bought just there at Original Road and Highway 82. And essentially, what this funding would do would put the property's title in ownership with a UMB bank holding that for the term of three years while we pay the lease payments. And then at the end of the three years, that title to the property would be ours. So there are certificates of participation and similar to what we use at the pool when we did those improvements last year. And anything, Christie?
I think the biggest thing is that, did you mention, was it three-year repayment?
Three-year, yeah. And then the interest rate maybe?
Yeah, the, yeah. The interest rate we have estimated is around 2% for the three years. We still think we're going to get some pretty favorable bank rates, being a municipal government in the state of Colorado. Those both, both of those things help us. It's still really unknown with the volatility in the market, exactly where they're going to come in, but somewhere in that range. I just talked to Bruce about that just today, and he still thought that that was reasonable.
That's quite a transaction. I read the packet, and I was trying to diagram how this was actually working. So we borrow the money, we buy the land, we lease the land, we get the land back.
And just for any listeners, clarification that the COPs that we have for Albany Pool are out of the post-funds?
Those are out of the post-funds, that's right. So these will be repaid with the general fund. Thank you.
That all looks well thought out, so. Comments, questions from council about this? Open this up for public comment. If anyone would like to address council on the second reading of ordinance number four, Welcome to log in. Again, we see no one in the waiting room or that's expressed interest in commenting on this. There's no one in the audience, so should you call in subsequently in the meeting, we could take the comment. But for now, we'll consider this, that there will be no further public comment on the items. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number four on second reading.
Mayor, I move the town council adopt ordinance number four, series of 2022, on second reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Pam, please call the roll.
Certainly. Let's begin with Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Villain Fonte.
Amy Boe, here we go.
Thank you. Glenn Drummond.
Yes.
Elise Hoddle.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
And Bill Kane.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. All righty.
So that concludes 7A. We move on to 7B, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five, series of 2022. Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Basalt, Colorado, amending the 2022 budget and providing for a supplemental appropriation for carryover of funds from the 2021 budget to the 2022 budget for various projects and additional funding for the Midland Avenue Streetscape Project. Christie.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed at the last meeting, this ordinance really is doing three things. There's three colors on the ordinance as well. If you look, there's, go to the exhibit A if you could, please, James, it's just a few pages down. There you go, right there. The pink color is all of your carryover funds, and I wasn't going to go through those in detail. We went through a few of those the last time. If anybody has any questions on those, those carryover items, but those, the pink is representative of all the things that the council has already proved in our 2021 budget, that those are timing issues, that we didn't want to confuse the 2022 budget process. That's why we're doing a supplemental at the beginning of the year, so our numbers stayed and remained the same during the budget cycle for 2022. And then the blue that you see there on the revenues, those are additional revenues for grants. So those are pretty much pass-through monies. And then if you go down a little bit, James, on that, to the next page, there's the purple. The purple represents additional costs and increases in costs. And the big one you see there is the $465,000. We had the Midland Avenue Streetscape Project that we were anticipating we might need to put some money in from where that's at. I've got a budget on that a little bit later to show you where that $11,469,000 budget is coming from. But that'll get us to the top of where we need to be at roughly $11.5 million on our Midland Avenue project, Basalt Forward, if we get the funding for the revitalization of Main Street Grant, which we'll be able to tell you hopefully in the next month or so. We're waiting to hear on those guys. So, and then there's $5,000 additional for some additional costs for the childcare planning that's anticipated this year.
So are there questions? This is also a second reading, so I will encourage anyone that has any questions or comments. Or ordinance number five, which is carrying over items from 2021 to the 2022 budget, feel free to log on and address council. Any questions of council on ordinance five? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance number five on second reading.
Mayor, I move the town council adopt ordinance number five, series of 2022, on second reading.
Second. Moved and seconded. Pam, please.
Certainly. Let's begin with Villain Fonte.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn Drummond.
Yes.
Elise Hoddle.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
Bill Kane.
Yes.
Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, resolution number 16, series of 2022, resolution of the Town Council of Basalt, Colorado approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aspen, Town of Snowmass Village, Town of Basalt, Pittkin County, and Aspen Valley Hospital to provide detoxification and withdrawal management. So Ryan, Chief Knott, and Jeff Conklin.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and kick this off, and Chief Knott is here to answer questions as well. But essentially, what this IGA does, we've had this in effect for a few years now, and we each pay our program share, these partners. Those are based on our population, the utilization, and the number of liquor licenses. And so what they were, in the discussion when we met earlier this, last year, looking to kind of retool the distribution. And one of the changes that we'll see as the Town of Basalt is initially, our population was considered for only the portion that lies within Pittkin County. However, we use this service for the entirety of the town. So we thought that it was fair to include our entire population there. And then it would also have the effect that right now, the vendor who currently runs the detox is named in the IGA, and this one would essentially generalize that as just the vendor. So should that change over time, you don't have to come back in and redo the IGA. I did get a question this afternoon, so just in case anybody of council or in the public were kind of wondering about the distribution, like when you compare Snowmass Village to the Town of Basalt, we think, you know, Snowmass Village has a greater number of liquor licenses than the town would, so that's a part of the reason for that, for that increase. And then Chief Knott was kind of racking his brain on that a little bit too, and thought that, you know, when we got this information of the modified funding for us and perhaps the other jurisdictions, but we were already locked into our funding, and so we were like, you know, you're kind of giving us this information late. And so it might be that the Snowmass Village is sort of paying their new share, and we had, you know, sort of an additional year of paying what we were paying based on our population. So that'll, that will get caught up in this next year. I hope I characterized that correctly, Chief. Okay, great. But this has been a really great service for us. It basically allows us to take folks to this detox center. They don't have to get checked into the hospital unless there are certain issues, like one, they have a head injury or something along those lines. But, you know, then there are several people that don't have a health insurance, and so they avoid really big bills coming to them. And then there's also a continuum of care that's available at detox. So it's just an awesome community asset for us. So with that, that's the gist of the agreement.
So our share is like, we pay in like nine, we're 9%. Is that our, I think there was a grant?
For 2023, we'll be at that number.
9%? Is there any bookkeeping or accounting for how much each jurisdiction uses the facility? I mean, is there any theory that, you know, if we end up using half of the sort of hospitalizations, that our dues will go up, we'll pay a bigger share? Or is, how is that going to be reconciled over time?
Yeah, they do keep track of that. So I don't, I don't think that that would necessarily be locked in on that, but Chief.
No, so it's, you know, the funding model is now going to be more based upon population liquor licenses throughout the jurisdiction. There is a utilization component, but throughout the years, our utilization has remained consistent with other jurisdictions. So as ours has gone up, others have gone up too. So those are the three components to the funding model. I don't see large spikes. We do have individuals that we will place in detox several times over a year, but then they get care, they move, you know, and get better. And so then our numbers next year go down. So it kind of averages out as you look at it over year, year over year. It really does.
So pretty good luck with it? I mean, this is.
Very. Yeah, there are follow-up services to get people help after being detoxed and getting them into programs or getting them, you know, local services that they can still maintain their home life, maintain their work life, but also get those services. They do an excellent job with that.
And it's located right there on the grounds where it's in one of the new buildings or is it?
It's in the Health and Human Services Building.
Okay.
Yeah. Right next to the hospital.
Ryan.
Just a quick math of the, after this year, our percentage goes up to 9%. And if it keeps around the same numbers, it's going to cost us three times.
Yeah, more along the lines of what Snowmass Village is paying.
That's what you were referring to in that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, that makes sense.
And we use tobacco tax to fund this too, by the way.
Oh, all right, perfect. Cool. That's better than what.
Free money.
Well, it's not free money, but it's, but you're talking.
I'm kidding, I'm joking.
3X-ing our bill on it.
No, no, it is.
It's a substantial increase in what was coming from.
And that's why we're bringing in the Eagle County portions of town and the Eagle County liquor licenses with that. And so if you look at Pittkin compared to Eagle County portions, it's about that two-to-one number.
A lot of smoke and mirrors with that tobacco tax. No pun intended. No pun perceived either. Hey, David.
I have a question. So if we were able to come up with more tobacco tax money, is there, do you think there's opportunities that they could have to provide more benefit to Basalt?
I can take that back to the group and have that conversation and report back to you. I know that, you know, it's a four-bed facility, limited on space and how many they can take in. And then, as with everyone else, employee challenges to staff. So I'll definitely go back into Gary's question earlier, the vision of what they see that vision being, and maybe we can get them, Janelle here to report on that.
Yeah.
I think she would be more than willing, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the matter then is for us to approve resolution number 16, series of 2022. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the town council adopt resolution number 16, series of 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Pam, please call the roll.
Certainly. Let's begin with Elise Hoddle.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
Bill Kane.
Yes.
Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Villain Fonte.
Yes.
Glenn Drummond.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Resolution number 17, series of 2022, resolution of Town Council of Basalt, Colorado approving the letter of intent regarding the Greater Roanoke Housing Coalition. Ryan?
Yeah, so I'll kick this one off, and then Elise has been attending these meetings, so has some current information as well, and James had attended that in the packs. in um the, the housing coalition uh bad fact. And I think it was two thousand and eighteen, we had signed on to the uh, I, I think it was an I G A at that time. Um, basically to kind of think regionally about affordable housing and how we might put our heads together um to, to not solve the problem, but at least um uh begin um addressing it um in some of the communities that otherwise um weren't uh quite as bullish on it in the past. And so um the good news with this one is we're actually um tonight, the City of Aspen um is talking about it at their council meeting too. So before they had not participated, um, and may come into the fold, which would be great to kind of get all of the, the Riverport Valley um uh towns and governments involved. Um, and uh basically the, the idea is to support workforce housing, senior housing, community housing. Um, and uh there was a study that was completed in two thousand and nineteen. Um, that was pre-COVID. Um, and it gave us some good information about our housing needs, housing gaps and that type of thing. Um, we had contributed ten thousand dollars to that effort. Um, and that is part of here locally, what we will be doing um uh is updating those numbers for our conversation on affordable housing related to um Basalt Forward twenty thirty. Uh, but um after uh COVID hit, this coalition paused for um a bit and have just recently um, you know, rekindled and, and that's why this letter is before you. Um, but there's also been um another effort um where the local governments, and I've participated um in, in these, we received a grant for um what's called the Resiliency and Recovery um roadmap. And that was from the state coming out of COVID. Um, and the idea, uh, the aim, I guess, that was, that was determined by this uh group of governments was um a stable workforce. And what uh the, the governments thought would um be a real tangible thing that we, is in our wheelhouse is affordable housing. How can we, how can we address that? So we sort of have these two parallel um efforts now working in unison. And the good part about it is that um there will be money coming through the state, so opportunities for grants. Um, the results of this, this roadmap, um, which is kind of a first step in getting access to these uh grants, um, would um, would, you know, basically partner with the coalition. And um as far as those grants go, um, it's four hundred million dollars coming to the state through the uh ARPA funding or the American Rescue Plan Act. And um just uh in looking at um a breakdown of the grants that may become available to nonprofits and local governments um is somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred million dollars. And so um notice I mentioned in there that nonprofits could have access to it. So part of the, part of the um, the um drive for the uh, the coalition would be to actually establish that framework. And so I think it would be a good fit um moving forward um to, to be able to administer and, and, you know, have an entity that's really able to kind of be that clearinghouse for affordable housing opportunities regionally. So um with that, they're asking us to sign on. We basically commit ourselves to a contribution toward um kind of creating that framework, getting this affordable housing uh nonprofit um going. And we did budget for that in twenty twenty-two. So um Elise, anything to add?
I think you covered most of it. Um, I just want to reemphasize that when we realized that we had sort of this coalition going and then the roadmap group going and then actually there was a third party through the Aspen Institute was hoping to organize some kind of a housing retreat sort of thing, we said, let's merge all these together. So for the last, I don't know, month and a half, maybe, we've been convening as one group. And so this letter of intent comes out of all of those groups together. So similarly to the broadband initiative, we knew that we would have more power to get some of those grants as a unified um applicant versus, you know, the individual towns. And then recognizing, of course, that this is a valley-wide issue and it can't be solved by just one municipality or one entity by itself. Um, so I also wanted to let you know that Glenwood Springs has signed on. Their council approved it, as has the Pitten County V O C C. So um, and we've been having conversations um down the Colorado River Valley corridor as well. So we have been talking to the Eagle County Housing Collaborative as well as the towns of Rifle and Parachute. Um, and so we're hoping, you know, that this will be like really significant group of folks that are all working together towards this one goal.
Who convenes the, and who staffs it? Where's the staff come from?
No staff right now. Um, Dave Myler um is sort of at the helm, if you will. Um, and um, uh, uh, what's Mr. Lamont's first name?
Bill.
Bill Lamont, thank you. Uh, Seth's passed away when he was, he was uh handling here with, with Mr. Myler on it. And so um, uh, he is sort of at the helm. I, I think he ultimately desires to maybe kind of step back in his role. You'd probably know better than I do, but.
Yeah, so there will be a board of directors that will be, I don't know, elected, chosen, convened, and we haven't quite figured that out yet, that will be responsible for, for running the organization. Um, at this point, Kara Silbernagle, and I apologize if I missed.
You got it right.
Has been sort of acting as the, the secretary and she's a Pitten County employee.
And then the staff, the idea of, of hiring a, a, you know, um, a staff member, that would be paid for out of this ten thousand dollar contribution.
Okay. So additional discussion, question, Dave?
It's, it's great to see this reconvening. Um, my only question will be on the timing of the regional study update. Uh, it's great that we're redoing it. Do you know when we might see that?
Well, we are just looking at our own numbers. Um, so that's kind of a.
Some of the assault part of it then.
Yeah, a, a, yeah, a basalt part of it. Um, and uh, I don't know that there's been talks of re-looking at the entire study.
Actually, there has, yeah. To, to David's point, that is one of the things, you know, that was sort of tentatively pinned to the, the board for future consideration was we recognize that there needs to be an update since the pandemic.
Yeah.
Um, and so that would, that's probably going to be one of the first things we look at is maybe trying to update those numbers regionally. And of course, we would be covering some areas that weren't covered in the original study if the Colorado River Valley comes on board.
Be cool to kind of stay apprised of that timing and when it might come out. I think it'll inform a lot of decision-making, potentially go into court for us.
Yeah, I don't, unfortunately, I don't think that that study is going to be out in time for us to make some of these pressing decisions.
Yes. Okay, thanks, so um.
Gotcha.
Mayor, I move that the town council adopt resolution number seventeen, series of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
It's a resolution.
We, we can do a voice vote on this if you don't, it's up to you if you.
It's a resolution, so you could do a voice.
And then we got some truck. This one? Didn't we have to, I'm sorry, I'm missing something here.
No, it's a resolution.
We can just say aye.
Okay, just do voice vote, okay. All those in favor, is it aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Whoa, slap.
Thank you. Uh, the last order of business for tonight is resolution number eighteen. This is a resolution of Town Council of Basalt, Colorado for reimbursement intention related to an equipment lease purchase agreement with Vectra Bank for a dump truck. So.
That's a fun topic. No, it's, 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 it's great, um.
Boys on there too.
Ah, yes, indeed. Sorry, before we move on, can I just make one more comment? I forgot.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, you all have a copy of the media release and I just wanted you to have this in case anybody asked you questions. Um, this has gone out, I believe, um, and the um Aspen Times and Aspen Daily News is at, is, has been asking questions, so you may hear about it. Thank you.
It's fine.
Thank you. So back on resolution eighteen, dump truck lease purchase.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor. This is um.
Christie's going to talk about the lease purchase.
Sure, that's great. Um, so, so we um actually ordered the stump truck back in twenty twenty. Um, we just now got it in twenty twenty-two in January, late January.
Supply chain disruption.
Yeah, something to that effect, yeah. Pretty much, yeah. So we were just really excited to get this thing in, but then now, um, so what we did is um, we asked for three local bids um for companies that, that could do the lease purchase agreement for us as we budgeted. And um Vectra was the one that came back with the most favorable bid for the town. And um, but there's one little caveat here is that we need to pay for the dump truck and they're still working on the documents. So we have a, a little bit of a timing issue. So that's why we um are requesting an approval of the resolution that'll just pretty much allow us to be able to re, get reimbursed for that um with this lease purchase agreement. So we'll pay them as, as of this um Tuesday and then we'll get reimbursed for that the following uh meeting when we get all of our, um, our items in order as far as the contract.
Is this a big ten-yard side loader or is this a conventional?
It's a new plow truck.
Hydraulic.
It's, it's a.
Hook truck.
It's what?
It's like a hook truck, so multiple things.
You can change out bed on it to different tools and it's uh, it's a brilliantness. And it's the first time we've purchased um a dump truck in twenty years, I think. So we don't put a ton of miles on them, um, but um, you know, they're, they have a lot of utility for us, obviously, plowing, salting and all that stuff.
Very good.
Do we get to see Boyd do a little happy dance?
Go for it, Ryan.
Motion to approve resolution.
Mayor, I move that the town council adopt resolution number eighteen, series of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Because I love dump trucks and Boyd.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we're jerk guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pam?